We'll follow. First item is the approval or amendment of the agenda that has been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the agenda as printed.
A motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes. All right, moving on. Item number two, this is our years of service recognition. We really discussed this yesterday on the radio. Chuck, we talked about the amount of years that our three individuals that we are going to be honoring today have been with Marshall County. The first being James Fuller, working out of the secondary road department. And James has been with Marshall County for 25 years. We look at Mary Stubbs, out of the auditor and recorder's office, who's been with the county for 20 years. And, I guess, only 10 years, but it's been interesting 10 years. I'd like to have Andrea Johnson come up. And she is part of our trio this week. Can come on over here, we'll present this to you. I know you have a very interesting job, and you say you never know what's going to happen, you're going to find it the morning you get here.
Absolutely.
Ten years, I've seen many things come through the Marshall County. So, from us, as Board of Supervisors, I'd like to thank you for your attendance, your work ethic, and your interesting work. So Andrea, thank you very much for coming in this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, would you go back to work, please, so we can... There may be something interesting down there. Let me know, would you? Thank you. All right, moving on to item number three, this is our consent agenda, the approval of the minutes from the regular section of April 5th, 2016. Item four, accept the manure management plan update from Erin Borton, ID number 65862. This is an annual update report and received on file with no changes to the manure management plan for year P index added. Item number five, accept manure management plan update from Tamco Pork, number two, LLC, ID number 58267. This is another annual report update received and placed on file with no changes to their manure management plan. Number six, accept file clerk of district court report from 316, general supplemental fund 10% surcharge of $1,082.42. The number seven, is approve the transfer of funds, transfer number 872, a quarter transfer of $482,500 from rural services fund to the secondary road fund. Item number eight, accept recorder's quarterly report from 316, that'd be March 19th, 2016. This records management fund $1,199, e-commerce fund $1,999, and general basic fund of $50,123.58. And item nine, approve the claims as audited and authorized county auditor and recorder to issue payment of same. The listing of claims paid at this meeting will be included with all claims paid for the month of April. The April list of claims will be part of the first meeting in May. I would entertain a motion on our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
And Mr. Chairman, I would move to second that.
And a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
I did want to mention the e-commerce fund is $1,199.
I said that wrong?
A little bit, yeah.
Thank you for letting me know.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Now I'm in trouble. Patton.
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving on to item number 10, approve personnel actions. The hire of Susan Ubenstock. See, I told you I got that wrong. Auditor and recorder assistant, auditor and recorder's office, full-time rate of pay of $14 per hour effective April 6th, 2016. This position was previously approved at the March 22nd, 2016 Board of Supervisors meeting. And I'll just, any comments on this?
Yeah, I had put this on the March 22nd board meeting, just because I wasn't sure as to who I was hiring at that point. I wanted to get something out there so I could hire and bring them in at any time. And so this is just kind of a, just putting her name out there, just to show who we actually did hire and put that in the minutes.
Okay.
And Susan has been here since April 6th, and she's doing an amazing job. We're very happy with our hires.
Good.
So we just needed just another motion, just to approve the name?
Just to make sure that, you know, we're just to have it out there for the name, for the individual name, just to be clarified.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve this personnel action.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
And a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
And Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item B out of the approved personnel actions, change of rate of pay Jessica Chezick, auditor and recorder's assistant, auditor and recorder's office, full-time change rate of pay from $14.60 an hour to $14.71 effective April 19th, which is today, 2016. And again, is there anything we need to know? Is it, just getting backed up to where this position is?
Yep, so what we did is, I had a little bit of money to play with as to when another person had left and who I actually hired, what their rate is. So I took that amount and kind of moved it to some people that were very deserving in my office. And kind of the funny thing is, is that Susan was hired on April 6th, and Jessie and Blaze were hired April 6th last year. And Maria, who is on here as well, was hired April 6th, seven years ago. So it's a good date for us in our office.
So if you need a job, come, apply on April 1st, so you could be hired on April 6th, apparently.
Yes, yes, yes.
I think it's important to point out that you have had some cost savings in your area. And you've done very similar to what the board has done with buildings and grounds by changing some figures around, but your overall budget number is still the same.
Yeah, and we're actually still down a percent.
Still down.
Yep, we're down a percent.
I was going to say, I thought you were down.
And so we're saving almost $21 an hour at this point, so.
There's been a lot of changes in the treasurers, the auditors, in several areas where we've done this and still stayed within our budgets.
Yeah. This is what I would say my dream team at this point, my basketball team. You know, sometimes you have to look at your future as to what you want to go forth and who do you want to keep. And I'm at that point where I'm keeping these people. And so I want to make sure that they know that these are important people to keep in our office, so, for Marshall County as well.
Yep, very good.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the personnel action for change rate of pay for Jessica Chezick, auditor and recorder assistant, auditor and recorder's office, full-time change rate of pay from $14.60 an hour to $14.71 an hour, effective April 19th, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Moving on to item C, change rate of pay, Blaze Wer, auditor and recorder's assistant, auditor and recorder's office, full-time change rate of pay from $14.60 an hour to $14.71 an hour, effective April 19th, which is today, 2016. Again, this is just like the first one, so I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the personnel action, the change of rate of pay for Blaze Wer, auditor and recorder assistant, auditor and recorder's office, full-time change rate of pay from $14.60 an hour to $14.71, effective April 19th, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Moving on to item D, change rate of pay to Roxanne Bach, auditor and recorder's assistant, auditor and recorder's office, full-time change rate of pay from $14.86 to $15.69, effective today, April 19th, 2016.
I would like to speak a little bit on Roxanne's behalf. Roxanne was hired about three to four months after I was hired for Marshall County. And with the changes and a movement of me going over to the auditor and recorder's office and stuff, Roxanne actually had to really step up. And that's what I was hoping that she would be able to do. She has completely stepped up, and she's doing our verification on the recorder side. And so she's a very important part of our group. You know, we have, Maria moved over, and so she's still a little new on recording. And then, of course, Susan just started. So, you know, we have a little bit of, you know, Cindy and I can do the recordings as well, but for the core group that are on the south side, she's a vital role over there. And so I wanted to show her that we were thanking her for keeping her.
And again, still staying within our budget means.
Yep, of course.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the personnel action, change rate of pay for Roxanne Bach, auditor and recorder assistant, auditor and recorder and recorder's office, full-time change rate of pay from $14.86 an hour to $15.69 an hour, effective April 19th, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second this motion.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, carried. Now, the final one, E, change rate of pay for Maria Vargas Gonzalez, auditor and recorder's assistant, auditor and recorder's office, full-time change rate of pay from $15.85 an hour to $16.16, effective April 19th, which is today, 2016. Again, we'll open up. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Well, she's got a lot of time.
Maria is actually, since the office was combined, she is the only person who was left from that original recorder's office. And so she has a lot of knowledge as to some of the things. She also did DNR, and now she's on the recorder side as to doing documents. And so she helps out on a lot of different aspects. And she also does some of our accounting type of functions and works with auditing and all of that. So she has a lot of experience, and she's been with us for seven years, so, with Marshall County.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the personnel action, change rate of pay for Maria Vargas Gonzalez, auditor and recorder assistant, auditor and recorder's office, full-time change rate of pay from $15.85 per hour to $16.16, effective April 19th, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, very good. Good job down there in that office, managing your budget. You're doing very well.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Moving on to item number 11, approve the request to use mobile band shell rental and use of courthouse grounds. Marshall Town National Day of Prayer has requested the use of the courthouse grounds and the mobile band shell for a national day of prayer on May 5th, 2016, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And I guess we'll just open it up for discussion. And anybody like to speak on that? If not, I would, this is, again, this is just a normal request for the band shell and the courthouse grounds. And Lucas Bankey with Buildings and Grounds is one that we will be ramrodding this and getting to make this happen. So I would entertain a motion if there is no discussion.
And they do pay for it.
And they do pay, yes, they do. There is, I think they've already, payments have already been made, I believe.
Yep. We've made several changes these last few years on our charges for the band shell. Danny's kind of headed that up. And we're in a position where all the charges are covering the cost of the band shell, so we're not bleeding funds on that.
Pardon me?
Do they cover electrical?
It's all, it's all covers in the lease or the rental agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the request from the Marshall Town National Day of Prayer for use of the band shell on May 5th, 2016, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Mr. Chairman, I would second this motion.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Again, we're, we talk about the rental of the band shell, which is, this is the first one of the year. Secondary Roads helps out by hauling it up here, Buildings and Grounds, and we supply a person to stay with it while it is open. And so it's just a, just a good piece of equipment. We're very proud that we have it, that we can use in Marshall County.
But it's, the calendar's getting pretty filled up on it.
It really is, yeah. We've got, I think we've got nine or 10 that are going this year.
Oh, we've got Oktoberfest, the Rose Festival, it'll be down in Haverhill for Haverhill Days, Fourth of July. Help me out, there's more.
The Fair. The Bible Fair is printed. Like I said, there's nine or 10 of them that we've got.
Street dance.
Street dance for the...
I mean, it's going to get a lot of use this year.
Yep. So Mr. Buildings and Grounds will be very busy moving. All right, we got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, moving on to the second one, is the approval request, use of the courthouse grounds. The Iowa Prayer Caucus has requested use of the courthouse grounds and electricity for a continuous prayer event that reads the Bible from cover to cover to be held on June 30th, 2016, 8 a.m. through July 3rd, 2016, at 4 p.m. Again, we'll kind of open it up for discussion. Any concerns? Would you like to?
We have some folks that...
Yep, yep. Just go onto the microphone and...
State your name, so we, people know who's talking.
My name is Cherie Nelson.
And my name is Mike Nelson.
And we are the county captains for this event. I'm not sure if you're aware of who the Iowa Prayer Caucus is. It started in 2005 as a national caucus and is an official caucus in the US Congress. In Iowa, it includes the governor, the lieutenant governor, 20 senators, and 47 representatives. In January of this year, they read the Bible cover to cover in the rotunda of the state Capitol. This is an outshoot of that, and the plan is that all 99 counties will do this at exactly the same time. And the governor is signing a proclamation next Tuesday, April 26th, for this event. And so we were just asking for the permit or approval or whatever we need. This is the first time we've done this, so we don't know if there is a fee. We will gladly pay that. The electricity that we need basically is for the nighttime, because this is a marathon. It will go for the full-time, continuous. And we're having folks come from all over the county. We want to include every community. And over 300 people will be participating in this, coming and reading at different segments. And so on the agenda, it lists 4 o'clock on the, on July 3rd. And in the letter that we sent, we did state that that's an approximate time. Depends on how fast people can read, but we will complete it on July 3rd.
I see. Now, how much lighting, what type of lighting is required? And again, we'll probably bring Lucas in on this.
All we need is a light, we'll probably have a podium for someone to stand behind to read, so they could set the Bible on and read. And it'll only be a light for reading.
Yeah. We are not planning to use a microphone. This is not what that's about. It's not to, you know, project it or anything. We're just reading the scriptures. And so what we need the electricity for is the lighting.
Just for the podium? Okay.
Right, for people to be able to see. And, well, and we may need something for the tables as people are signing in. We're keeping track of who's coming.
Now, I guess one of the questions, on the 30th being a Friday.
A Thursday.
Is it Thursday?
30th is a Thursday, correct.
It will start at 8:00 a.m. in the morning.
Okay, and go Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and end on Sunday.
Approximately 80 hours.
How, do we have to be careful, because we are open?
Correct. And we will not be causing any encumbrances at all to the courthouse business. We will not be blocking anything. We're just going to be there as a presence. And so...
Somewhere in the front that they're asking for us to do. And we will probably put up one of those canopy tents, you know, the small like this ones. In case it's raining or whatever, and for sun protection for those that are reading. And we'll probably, we will be providing the table and a few chairs for the people coming. And then, and a podium. So basically, just electricity for that.
Well, my suggestion would be work directly with Lucas.
Okay.
And he could, he could, you know, help you place the tent where that needs to be. I mean...
Awesome.
You know.
Yep.
Yeah.
Or just somewhere in the front, yes.
Yeah, and, you know, everything, everything, that would be perfect.
During courthouse hours, you know, it's obviously, we're a public building, you have use of the facilities, but we do shut down at 4:30.
Correct. And we have, we already have, the First Presbyterian Church has offered to be open for us so that we have a place to go.
Facility.
For facilities, yes.
As far as a charge for electricity, it's going to be such a minor amount. I don't think we could come up with a small enough charge to cover it.
You know, and just a suggestion, you know, in different downtown events, we've had a AAA septic have put up, you know. If that's the case, what we would do is ask it to be on the, on the south side of the courthouse, not on the front. But that's an availability at your cost, your expense.
Exactly.
So if that's what you'd like to do, that would be, that works for, that works with us.
Or use the Presbyterian Church.
And that's what our plan was, because they had offered it, you know.
Okay.
And we, and we, we'll be going out to the whole county and all the towns and the, and the local churches and stuff. They'll be getting a letter after we get the approval, and then we can move forward with planning this thing. Something we haven't done before, but like I said, it's 80 hours approximately, and we divided that up into 320 segments. So people will be reading the Bible for 15 minutes, and we're going to be having people coming through this whole timeframe. That's the plan. We'll see how it all works out, but that's what we're looking at here.
My mind's not clicking fast enough here, so at 15 minutes, how many people are you going to involve?
320.
That's how many segments. And, you know, we like to get permission and, and participation would be fantastic.
Yes, if you'd like to come and join us.
And what I would say, as far as the courthouse, I would get Lucas's number. He needs to get yours.
We'll do it.
And anything you do in the courthouse grounds goes through him.
So there will be no fee then? Is that correct, or is that our understanding?
Well...
If there is, that's not a problem, so.
I don't know. No. I'd say no, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
It's so inconsequential, we, I don't think we can come up with a number smaller than that.
No, no.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions or anything?
These guys are pretty sharp, so I don't know.
If someone is listening, maybe put out your contact information onto the mic, so if they have any information, or they want to get in contact with you, how can they get in contact with you?
Okay, you can call us at 641-751-4194. Or you can email us at, and I'll let you...
It's m.nelson@emerson.com. Obviously, I will.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. All right, I would entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the request from the Iowa Prayer Caucus for use of the courthouse grounds. The Iowa Prayer Caucus has requested the use of the grounds and electricity for a continuous prayer event that reads the Bible from cover to cover, held on June 30th, 2016, 8 a.m. through July 3rd, 2016, at 4 p.m.
Mr. Chairman, I would second this motion.
And a motion and a second. And again, I'm just going to add to that, that motion, that none of the event will be held inside the courthouse, it's outside.
Correct.
Outside the courthouse. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
The only thing I see changed is we're going to add, it just says "from cover," so we're going to add "from cover to cover to be held." When you guys were stating it, that's actually what you put in, so I'll just have Lisa, when she gets some minutes changes, add that in, so. Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
All right, good job. Moving on to item number 13, Lucky 13, that's a resolution, abatement of mobile home taxes, Iowa Code 445.16 and 555(c)-2, Resolution 2016-0017, and...
Here we are again.
Mr. Iowa.
Good morning. Jared Hyal, Marshall County Treasurer. Three mobile home abatements here today. The first two are, these were abandoned and listed as valueless. They went through the process for that. And then the last one was, well, the mobile home's not there anymore, and hasn't been there for a couple of years. So, and it just kind of, another one of those that slips through the cracks, disappeared. It was still on our books, so we're taking it off.
We described it yesterday with Chuck on the, on the radio, that this is something that just happens. I mean, and we're in the housekeeping, cleaning things up.
Mobile homes, well, they're called mobile for a reason, so they can move in and out. And a lot of times, it's hard, well, it really shouldn't be our job to babysit the mobile home parks, but sometimes what we have to try to do. And a lot of times what happens is, we'll find out, you know, after a statement's been sent out or after a delinquent notice has been sent out to the person living there, and they're like, "This isn't me." And, or we just don't get things back, or eventually a new park owner manager or whatever contacts says, "Why am I getting this? This isn't accurate." So it's, a lot of times we find that park managers are changing a lot of, at some of these parks.
Because all total, it totals about $1,100.
The, these are all just the past two years in taxes, is what these are.
On the one that's abandoned, then, do they physically take it and destroy it and get rid of it so that we don't have this come back again on that same parcel and piece of equipment?
The two abandoned ones, what it is, is they are putting it into, I got the guy's name on there. They're putting it in, they're transferring it to this guy. Gosh, where'd it go? Do I have a list on what the guy's name is?
Dennis, no.
Lindgard.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, it's not, I don't have the name of who it's going into. I have that on my other records, but it's, they're putting into another guy's name, and I think he's actually the maintenance guy that works there. And so what he's doing is, he's rehabbing them to be either, he's going to sell them and get them out of there, or he's going to rehab them that they can be habitable there at the trailer park. So that's, that's the process. It's kind of a funny code that, it's basically, hey, if someone abandons it, it's pretty easy to classify it as valueless. And then there's a time process for the people that abandon it. They get noticed to get all their stuff out of there, and if they don't get it out of there, then the park owner or the person they put the name is, and they have a certain time period to get rid of it, rehab it, do whatever they want with it. So it's, it's a kind of an interesting process, but it doesn't take much for it to be considered valueless because the cost of moving them in and out can be pretty substantial, so.
I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve Resolution Number 2016-0017, abatement of mobile home taxes, Iowa Code 445.16 and 555(c)-2.
Got a motion, need a second?
Mr. Chairman, I will second that we adopt Resolution 2016-0017, abatement of mobile home taxes to the Iowa Code 445.16 and 555(c)-2.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ravenbauer.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Moving on, item number 14, secondary road equipment purchase. Discussion possible action on purchase of a 2016 John Deere 772G model, or motor grader. Mr. Guylandfeld, good morning.
Hi. This is, this would be a purchase that would be out of our fiscal '17 budget. If we get it ordered this week, we'll probably, would take delivery, I am hoping, September, maybe a little bit later than that. But it's, there's a pretty good build-out on the motor graders. This is a unit that we have excellent experience with. We've got two in service right now in the county, and so we don't feel like there's any reason to want to change horses right now, so.
What, are we, are we, is this recycling one out?
We are, we will be, we'll be trading in a 1990 140G that has about 24,000 hours on it. So it's, it's already been through two majors, and, and it's, you know, on its, on its third life, so to speak. It is our oldest motor grader that we'd be trading in.
So out of the 246.5, do we trade?
That's what the trade included.
Well, that's already the trade included.
Yes, there's, there's a trade for the, the one, for the 140G is $38,000. So the, let's see, the purchase would just be on the purchase minus trade as far as what comes out of the, the equipment budget.
So the original price of it was just shy of $300,000?
$284, $284.5, which for us is right at $80,000 below list. So we'd get, we get a substantial discount on motor graders.
Are we going to be totally green by the time we're done with, with this? It seems that's the direction we're heading.
They, they still paint them yellow.
Okay.
See, the last one we got, that, that was the yellow one.
We've, we've, we've talked about it with the operators, and generally, the two bigs would be Cat and John Deere. And we, the, the John Deere units still have a steering wheel. Now, I don't know why, that ends up being the selling point, but it also is just a reality for us that we've got several 140Ms that are Caterpillar that don't have a steering wheel, they're joystick machines. Well, when they reach the age where they're getting out of the regular rotation, we're not sure we can even put them on the fence to have part-timers operate them, because we can't take some guy that's never run a stick-operated machine and have him go plow snow with it, because he just, he wouldn't be used to operating it. So we may have to trade out our Cat 140Ms a little earlier than what we would normally plan because they won't be as flexible for slip-seating with different operators. The guys that have our 140Ms like...
I guess I go back to when we had to buy them. We had to buy them because that was a thing to have.
That was, you gotcha. So are we almost all totally stick-operated now?
No, no. I think there's, I think there's only three, there's three or four Ms. But the oldest one that we have is getting close to that point where we're either going to... have to trade it in or do a major overhaul on it. It's just, at, at the time, I think they thought it was the way everybody was gonna go, and then the industry kind of said, well, maybe not.
Where's, where would this new unit go, be placed at?
I don't know yet. Which shed, we try to put them in, in sheds that, like, say, our first two John Deeres, we put them down in Melbourne. Because then they have the same filters, and so if you can just run the same kind of shed, same kind of unit out of the, out of that shed for both of the main operators, then there's not as many different maintenance items you have to keep on, on stock for them.
Sure.
That's the other reason to stay with a, a unit, be more consistent, because the mechanics know what they're looking at every time they, you know, when there's only a couple of different units that they have to, have to be able to, to work on.
Now, the, the dealer then is out of Des Moines?
Yes, Murphy Tractor Equipment is who we're making the purchase with.
So there's really no difference there, because Cat's out of Altoona, right?
Cat's a Ziegler, yeah. And then, and they, they dictate who our area, you know, sales...
Yeah, you don't have a choice.
Right.
And just so everybody understands, this is not something we can get from our local dealers.
Correct.
So it's not that we're not keeping the money local, it's that we don't have the option of doing that.
But we are keeping the money sort of local, because our deer motor graders are built in Davenport, and the Cats are some not even built in this country, so I'm good with that.
And again, just to make reference, this, this will go on the sixteen seventeen budget after July one, and we've, we've kind of already have put that in his budget. He put that in his budget for equipment replacement. So we're just following what we've done for the budget.
We're just getting it ordered now so that we can get it earlier in this, in the budget year.
We, we want to have this thing in place and fully ready to go before winter starts. And that's why we wanted to get the, you know, if we can get it in September, October, then we can get the, get it in the new operator's hands and he can get used to it before...
Think we'll have it by September?
I, I'm hoping September. It may be a little bit, maybe later September, but it, it, it won't be July third or anything like that.
I'm just curious, the snow plows, are they, are they adaptable to both Cat and John Deere? Do you have to do a little...
The, the V plows just have to do with what you put on the front for the, for the mount for that, so yeah, they can, you can use different, different V plows. The same, the same mounts, if you just, you can use the same mounts with both the units, and...
Okay.
We, we do order them with the wing attachment on here, so this will have the, the hanky wing blade with it.
All right, I, I would entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the purchase of a twenty sixteen John Deere seven seven two G motor grader for the purchase price of two hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred dollars. This will be paid from our fiscal year twenty seventeen equipment budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second this motion.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ravenbauer?
Yes.
Patton?
Yes. And Paul, maybe, maybe we could go down and we could drive this thing, kind of shake her down.
Or maybe not.
I haven't yet.
I'll handle this.
I try to stay out of the seat.
Moving right along.
I've driven a motor grader at different places, but I've...
You can't drive it either.
I've never done anything productive with a motor grader.
Getting kind of cranky with only two hundred and eighty-four days left.
No, two fifty-nine.
Two fifty-nine.
Item number fifteen, resolution number twenty sixteen dash zero zero one eight. This is weight limit bridge postings, and Paul, we'll just kind of turn it back over to you.
This is our, just our resolution for the different weight restrictions that we have in the county on our bridges, and we try to update it once a year after our bridge inspections come back. There are situations where if we find something or something happens where we would change this mid-year or two, I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not just like a January one, that's when we do it. We just, in our, in our bridge inspection process, when the reports come back, they make recommendations for the posting, and then we, we'd make the changes on the resolution and the, and what's signed out there in the, in the county. The changes also involve taking off bridges that are, were posted that we've got replaced. And the, one of the biggest ones on this list that's not here anymore is C five, the old crooked bridge, is gone. It's, it's under construction. And the only other change on posting that we have on this resolution is for Bridge J fifteen, which is on Sanford, south of town. It's a, it's a trust bridge, and it was already posted at a twenty-eight ton, thirty-seven ton, thirty-eight ton multiple posting. You know, the kinds where they show the different types of trucks, and they give a different posting for each axle configuration. And they're just recommending that we reduce that to ten, fifteen, fifteen. So it's just, it's making an already posted bridge just a little bit more restrictive.
So every year, every year, restrictions become greater?
Well, it's, they inspect the bridges every two years, some every one, every year, and they just evaluate the condition, and based on that condition, they will re-rate and, and change posting recommendations.
Now, I see some of these bridges, like fourteen, one fourteen, and P fourteen are closed. So does that, that mean that road is closed?
There, those are the bridges that are permanently closed at, at this time. Stop that.
So there's no traffic on that road at all?
Well, like A seven, that's the bridge on the county line that, that we had the collapse on that happened in June. It'll be three years ago that that happened. So it's essentially just two dead ends up to this bridge. The road's still usable, but the bridge is still, you know, it's still kind of in limbo. We're waiting to see what we're gonna do with that one.
Did we finally get permission to take that out of the creek?
It's, we haven't had any, it's still in litigation.
I was gonna say, I didn't think they had any official...
It's not, it's not completely done yet. We are eligible for funding on it, so then, once we get the litigation completely finished, then TAMA and us can talk about what we want to do with it.
So FEMA finally gave us funding?
It's, we, we think so. We think it's eligible. But then we are trying to keep it eligible while we get done with this stuff. You know, there's, there's a time limit where if we don't do something, FEMA's gonna say...
Guess you don't need it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Good way to put that, I guess.
But we do, we do post the ones that are, that are closed. I, I one used to be on here, and that's the river bridge on the county line. I took that off of here as closed, because there's not even a bridge there anymore. A flood at some point took the bridge and moved it over to Tama County somewhere. So I just took it off the...
They didn't, they didn't bring it back?
No, no, I don't want it back anyway.
Oh, okay.
And these ones that are closed, are they on our replacement schedule, or are they gonna remain closed because of the usage?
The only, the two that would have a possible replacement pending would be A seven, and then I fourteen, I think, is the, is that, that's the one south of La Grande, and I'm not sure on the stat, the status of that still...
You've got to do that, don't you?
It's their bridge, but we still have it posted closed. But with the upcoming great separation bridge that's gonna happen at one forty-six, I'm not positive the city of La Grande will ever go forward with that. So at this time, it, it could very well be a permanent closure.
And talking with the fire, fireman, kind of fire, is, is they've got to replace, fix that bridge before they can do, close one forty-six, because they've got no way to get down and around. But I can't, I'm kind of, I'm a skeptic on that, but I'd hate to be, you know, in the fire situation or between the gillman and La Grande, because La Grande, and I go clear east, then over and back, but...
And I'm, I'm surprised to hear that, because the city of La Grande is who isn't, at this point, going after the funding that, that we did get accepted for. Now, they will stay on that list, so they can still get it next year.